Good morning, everybody else up? Audience up? All right, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to a public hearing. And Sewer District Number One, Extension Five. And this is in relation to the public notice that we put out concerning eminent domain procedure law, Section 202. The meeting is January 4th, 2021. It's 7:00 p.m. And before we open up the public hearing to the public, I'd like to ask the clerk to read the notice on the record. And then I will establish the rules of the public hearing.
Notice of public hearing pursuant to eminent domain procedure law, Section 202, Sewer District Number One, Extension Five, Towne Row, Serketown County, New York. Notice here might give that the Towne Row Town Hall will conduct a public hearing to determine the need, location, and installation of sewer mains and other associated infrastructure with respect to the installation of the infrastructure for Sewer District Number One, Extension Number Five, a public project, prior to an acquisition of the real property required for the project. The public meeting will be held on January 4th, 2021, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at the Row Town Complex, 351 Route 9, Row Number 12828. We have video conference meeting as part of the hearing, state of the news law and executive order 202.1, and all extensions. Due to public health and safety concerns, the public will not be permitted to attend at the town hall at remote locations where town board governors or department heads will be situated or at any other location. The public will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment during the public hearing. The link to the video conference hearing is https://us-02-web.zoom.us/j/87887277169. The installation of sewer mains and other associated infrastructure will improve the sewage conveyance within the Sewer District Number One, Extension Number Five, and is necessary component for the Sewer District. Installation of the sewer mains and other associated infrastructure will require acquisition of easements over and across real property located at the Towne Row, the exact location of which will be discussed in the public hearing. The easements not be obtained voluntarily from the landowners, the Towne Row shall pursue acquisition through condemnation. The proposed location of the real property to be acquired is as follows. 1458 Route 9, SBL number 63.3-1-3.3. 1294 Route 9, SBL number 77.1-1-38.1. 1356 Route 9, SBL number 77.1-1-4. 1438 to 1440 Route 9, SBL number 63.3-1-26. 1558 Route 9, SBL number 63.2-1-19. 1434 Route 9, SBL number 63.3-1-3.2. 1606 to 1608 Route 9, SBL number 49.4-2-10. 1616 Route 9, SBL number 49.4-2-16. 1535 to 1541 Route 9, SBL number 63.1-14.1. And 2 to 68 Butler Road, SBL number 63.4-1.11. There are no other proposed alternative locations for the installation of the sewer mains and associated infrastructure to complete this project. Please take note that all interested persons appearing at the public hearing will be heard. Property owners who may subsequently wish to challenge condemnation of their real properties due to judicial review may do so only on the basis of issues, facts, and objections raised at this hearing, dated December 8, 2020.
Thank you very much, Leanne, for reading that in the record. Before we get going, I have some introductions for the record, starting at my right. I have, we have Councilmember Hogan, Councilmember Noonan, Councilmember Van Tassel on my left, as well as Councilmember Donahue, Supervisor Kuzniars. We have also with us tonight Attorney for the Town, Carlos Bittner. We have Special Counsel Bill Ryan with us, who's directly involved with this process. And Town Engineer, we have Don Rhodes, as well as Chris Wren with us. So I think I've got everybody covered. Just the ground rules for the public hearing. Because we're in unique circumstances, the public will be able to participate via a call-in. The number is 518-793-6780. I believe the number's posted in front of my desk as well for the camera.
It's also on chat.
Okay, it's also on the screen. And the rules will be as we have adopted at our organizational meeting. Each individual will have five minutes to comment. Please state your name and address for the record. And once everyone who has indicated an interest in participating in the hearing has had additional five minutes to speak, we'll then go back to any individual who wants to continue to speak in five-minute increments until everyone has had an opportunity to be heard. Before we open it up to the public, I believe that the Town Engineer has a PowerPoint presentation that he will present, and then the public portion will begin shortly after that.
Can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, so let that, in a motion to open the public hearing for the eminent domain procedure per Section 202 for Sewer District Number One, Extension Five for the Towne Row and Serketown County, New York.
So, second.
All in favor? The motion carries.
And Bill, would you like to say some opening words before I get down to the rest of the stuff?
Just a few procedural issue matters. According to the eminent domain procedure, the notice of public hearing had been published in the local newspaper, and an affidavit of publication has been submitted evidencing that fact. The notice was published on December 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, and five successive issues of the post-star. In addition to that, the effect of the property owners also received under the eminent domain procedure law certified letters informing them of the date and time of this public hearing. And in addition to that, the property owners were also certified personally. The eminent domain procedure law is disjunctive in the sense that the, it can be certified now or personal service, we did both. And my other final point is when Leanne was mentioning the properties, I just want the record to reflect that 1458 Route 9, SBL 63.3-1-3.13, and Route 9, and 1434 Route 9, SBL number 63.3-1-3.12. Other than that, I turn the show over to Don Rhodes.
Thank you, Bill. So again, my name is Don Rhodes. I'm the Project Manager for the project. I've been working with the town for a couple of years on this. I'm a Senior Project Manager at La Bird Group. And I'd like to begin by talking about the meeting purpose. Specifically, there's been six properties that the town has not been able to get easements from, and there's no viable alternatives that exist for the sewer project. So we're using the tool of eminent domain in order to get those easements. Eminent domain is a tool that the governments use to secure private property for public purposes in exchange for fair compensation. A lot of people call it taking because that's the legalese term, but people do get paid for the property that the town needs. During this meeting, it'll be very brief. We're just going to outline the purpose and the background of the project, give you a brief project overview, and specifically show some of the easements that we need and why alternative easements do not exist. So the purpose of the sewer project is twofold. One is for the environmental protection. There is some, there was one open consent order that was issued by the Department of Environmental Conservation within the district because of some violations for wastewater discharge. Although it's been closed, that order is no longer open. It highlights the need for the project. There's also very well-draining soils in the district, and what that causes is rapid discharge of wastewater into the ground. And typically, it reaches the groundwater without treatment, and that pollutes and follows the groundwater. And lastly, I think they go hand in hand, depending on your perspective, whether it's environmental or economic development. Economic development and growth is definitely needed, according to the past several comprehensive plans or few comprehensive plans that have been fostered by this community. And they've each identified that the Route 9 sewer project is a critical piece of the backbone needed to incite that growth. So the sewer infrastructure will allow that growth, creating jobs, increasing sales tax revenue and property tax revenue. So for some background, following a public hearing June 26, 2018, the Board approved creation of the Sewer District based on a map plan and report that was prepared by our office. That was, approval was granted subject to costs not exceeding $16 million and contingent on landowner approval and subject to approval of the State Comptroller. Voter approval was granted on August 26, 2018 by a public referendum. State Comptroller approval was granted on April 9. For the project background, since the district was created, everybody's been hard at work, but specifically, the town was able to secure a grant that will pay for 25% of those project costs. So the plan of finance that was included in the map plan and report does not reflect those grant funds. That immediately lowers the rate payments that are projected in the original plan. The town also authorized working with a low-pressure sewer system to reduce project costs and minimize right-of-way important, right-of-way requirements, which is kind of important, and I'll talk to that specifically tonight. The current proposal very generally is, what you see in front of you is a map of the district area. On the left of the screen, you'll see in light blue is the Exit 17 service area. Those are the parcels that are within the Sewer District Extension. There's also one parcel off Bluebird Road that's in that district, and it's connected by that orange line, which is a force main. That force main conveys the wastes into the existing industrial park force main, which discharges to the city of Glens Falls. So the low-pressure sewer option that was implemented after the map plan report was created allows us to minimize costs and right-of-way requirements when compared to grabbing the piping systems. When we got our survey back and we found out where the right-of-way really was along the corridor and the terrain that actually occurs along that pipe system, we found very quickly that it will be costly from not only the right-of-way costs, but the restoration costs to do grabbing system that was originally proposed. As a result, we looked at a different method. And what you see here is a graphic that shows individual homes connected to pumps. Those pumps connect into the sewer main, and because they're pumped, we don't have to rely on pipes that are constantly sloped downward, which is required in a gravity system. And the pumps allow you to pump uphill. It also allows you to react with grade as it undulates through the corridor. A conventional gravity system, on the other hand, requires us to get positive flow from the house typically out of the basement area to the street, then discharge downhill to the discharge point. When you have a pretty flat or gently undulating terrain like you have on Route 9, that's very complicated because as you go along the corridor, you're going deeper and deeper to get gravity flow. As you get further away from that initial discharge point, you get very deep, and you end up having to put in a lot of pump stations to lift it up to get it to the next gravity section. So with the low-pressure sewer concept, we are able to minimize the trench depth and eliminate five pump stations, and that's a significant cost. The low-pressure sewer option also allows us to use trenchless methods. Some people call it directional drilling. Some people call it boring. I think it's definitely boring. But the image talks about, it shows how you can route up the path of the pipe underground with very limited surface interruptions. So we drill about 700 to 800 feet in distance. Some places, we can go a little bit longer. And at those locations where we go in and come out of the ground, those are the only locations that we have to disturb the surface. So for the most part, the corridor doesn't require restoration. You don't have to cut through driveways, sidewalks, lawns. It also allows us to get under existing services, water, gas, power. We can go right underneath them without having to dig through them and then route the pipe The right-of-way is also significantly enhanced by the low-pressure sewer. Again, because we're not going as deep, we can minimize what we need as far as space. Every depth requires us someday to be able to go in there and service it. And going down with the trench box, you're going to need about 10 feet on either side if you're at the depth that we need for a low-pressure sewer. We would need to go deeper and wider if we went with gravity. So the easement parcel, there's a couple of different land requirements that are needed for the project. One is we need an easement for the pump station, and we only need one now. We also need sewer service easements. Service easements are required for the connections. Those are the individual customer's connection to the town's main. And then there's the main easements, and the main easements are what we're here to talk about tonight. Service easements are voluntary. If people don't want to connect to the system, they don't need to give us easements. If they don't give easements to the town, they unfortunately won't get connected. But if they do, they get the connection, they get the service. So the sewer easements is what we need as part of the eminent domain process. So fundamentally, the reason that we need these easements is the area along Route 9 is really narrow. At some locations, easements are required just for the installation of the piping. And in addition, you need to have some space on both sides of that pipe to be able to service it in the future, whether it's to tap it, whether it's to fix, repair of the line. You need to have space to operate, and that's what this easement covers. Not only the installation, but the long-term operation and maintenance. So today, the town's been incredibly successful. A project of this scale typically doesn't have the response rate as this one does. We needed a total of 70 main easements. We have 64. That's huge, all voluntary. People were very supportive. But because we couldn't secure all of them, we have to use this eminent domain as a last resort. We did have one gentleman donate the parcel for the pump station, which is great because that's the largest land area we need for the project, and that was at no cost to the So of the easements that are needed, we have 1558 Route 9, 1458 Route 9, 1606 and 1608 Route 9, 1294 Route 9, 1535 to 1541 Route 9, and 2 to 68 Butler Road. Those last two are national grids. We are working with them, and we're pretty confident that we'll be able to secure the rights needed to construct. However, since we don't have them at this date, we need to include them in the process because it's a statutory requirement to go through the process. We don't want to have to do it twice. So the other important thing is there's no alternative locations that exist for this project. Room for installation and space on each side of the pipe is needed. The DOT will not allow us to place the pipe within the structural zone of the pavement, which means a six-foot pipe needs to be six foot away. We need to provide 18 inches of separation between your water mains, which are six feet, which means we're seven and a half feet down with this pipe. That's deep, and it means we need to be far away from the edge of pavement. And when most locations, you only have seven or eight feet of right-of-way, it's just not enough. The other problem we have is there's a water main on the other side of the road, which I'll show you when we drill down into each one of the maps. That complicates your ability to go on the other side of the road. So specifically, the first one is, this location is 1294 Route 9. You'll see on the top of the page, a blue line is a water main that's on the north side of the road. We can't go to that side because you have to stay 10 feet away. So we're forced to be on the south side of the road, and you'll see where the pipe is relative to the purple line, which is the right-of-way. Because of our depth, we're about 11 to 12 feet down in this location, and we had some constraints on the parcel advancing to it, it caused us to need to be about 12 feet across. So in this location, we're probably four feet to the private property from the highway boundary, and there's no alternative to get across this area. The parcel is about 60 feet wide. We do have easements on both sides. This parcel, however, we haven't been able to secure. The next property has a similar situation. The depth of the main causes us to be further away. Also, in this location, unlike the last one, we have two mains going through here. We have the force main and low-pressure sewer main in parallel. That requires us to have a little bit more space. Again, we have all the property leading up to it on both sides. We're missing this little piece in the middle, and it's about a 772 square foot easement.
What's the address?
That is 1458 Route 9. So with no other options, you can't really go to the other side of the road because of what's over there with the 16-inch water main. This is our only alternative. Next property is 1558 Route 9. Similar situation. We have the water main on the north side of the road, and here, the depths are shallower, but our pipe needs to be right on the highway boundary because of its depth. And because you need room on both sides for maintenance, we need an easement in this location. This is one of the larger of the easements. This is about 22, 2300 square feet, 2,275 to be exact. But again, no alternative. We have a 16-inch water main on the other side, and we just don't have enough adequate highway boundary to work with it. Next one is Street Address 1606 to 1608 Route 9. Same situation here. The pipe ends up being right on the highway line. Once we stay away from the edge of pavement, the prescribed distance that the DOT requires, because they require us to stay out of that structural zone, we're down 10 feet. We need to be 10 foot from the edge of pavement, and that's exactly where we are here. This property also requires a flushing station about 1,000 feet apart. We put flushing stations to allow for servicing of the system, allows the maintenance to be able to flush clean water through the system to make sure that the wastes are not settling out and get pushed off to the city system rather than staying in your pipes.
How big is the flushing station?
Basically, it's a four-inch pipe that comes up just underneath the surface in like a 12-inch box, so it's all flush. It's really small. They pick up the lid, there's a connector on top, and that's what they flush the clean water into. Smaller than a mammal. The last two properties are national grid. Again, I mentioned that these are ones we're working with grid actively on, and we hope to be able to secure them outside of the eminent domain process. And all signs are that we will be able to, need to drop a couple of comments and get back to them, but that's pretty easy to do now that we've got them, we have the open dialogue now, thanks to Supervisor Kuzniars. In this location, we have a similar situation where we need a little bit more space. We're almost on the property line. We're about 10 feet deep. We need to be 10 foot from the edge of pavement, and the water main is on the other side of the road. No alternatives exist, and we have right-of-way, we have easements on both sides of this parcel, so this is needed to allow the project to advance. And the last one is also national grid. That address was 2 to 68 Butler Road. And the next address is, again, national grid, 1535 to 1541 Route 9. Same situation. This is actually on the corner as it comes from Route 9 to Bluebird Road. And as the sewer main comes around that corner, they own the corner, and we need easement across that right-of-way. At this location, we actually cross the water main, and we go on the other side of Bluebird, and we go all the way down Bluebird within the existing right-of-way because the county is a little bit more, easier to, their standards are a little bit easier to comply with as far as being able to build and perhaps do some shoulder reconstruction. We don't have that ability in the DOT right-of-way. We have to stay completely outside of their pavement. Here, we have a little bit more flexibility. So the next steps are pretty simple. We receive oral or written public comment. The town prepares a determination of findings. We consider adoption, publishing those determinations and findings in the paper. And then we share those findings and final offers as a last attempt to purchase the easements. And nobody wants to go the court route. We are hoping that each of these landowners will accept those purchase offers, but they'll be extended in such a way that reserves those folks' rights to seek additional compensation through court, but they can still give the town the easement. If they're able to give us easements, we can move forward with the project, and that's what we hope will happen. It's still, they have the ability to come back for additional compensation, but at least the town has the rights to construct as you go through that process. Following a 30-day waiting period for potential briefments, that's when we get grievances, that's when we go to the Supreme Court and petition them to convey the property by eminent domain. Current project status, we hope to be submitting final plans to the DEC, EFC, Serketown County, DOT for permits and approval to construct in the coming weeks. However, until easements are secured, we can't release those plans for bidding. We are still hopeful that we'll have a spring to early summer 2021 construction start. That allows us to get plenty of pipe in the ground this year, and we see a 24 to 30-month process to complete. All those total schedules rely a little bit on the contractor that gets the job. We are recommending this be done in one project. It's going to be easier to control. And then in the very end, we see the final project completion for being able to accept flows along Route 9 during 2022, with final completion and some of the tie-ins following into 2023. There are some mobile home parks that have significant work that needs to go on in there, and the priority is really to get the backbone in and then connect them. Do you have anything to add, Bill? That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Don, and appreciate that this has been a long march to finish along. And we're almost there as far as starting well rolling the construction. We couldn't have gotten there without you and your staff's assistance, as well as key assistance from Special Counsel Bill Ryan on that, and of course, Town Attorney Carlos Bittner for making sure that our efforts are quarterbacked here locally. I do want to point out for the record, before we open it up to the public, as we were required to do at the public hearing, shortly after that, there was some media coverage about our project here, necessity to move on of the eminent domain proceeding, which required at that time that the property ID numbers, as well as property owners, be released for public consumption. And I just have to say, right after that article ran, we had three property owners that were in my office the next day, willing to sign the easement. And I have to thank them for their incredible cooperation. There was a miscommunication between my office and the property owners. They were more than willing to help out with this project. They included owners of Wall Supply, Safety Warehouse, which are long-term, longtime residents and supporters in our community. Mr. Clausel has a business on Route 9, as well as Mr. Knoblock, so I want to thank them publicly for... So I want to thank them publicly for working with us and getting those properties secured for the easement. At this time, I just want to remind everyone that the calling number for public participation is 518-793-6780. And also remind everyone that each individual will have initial five minutes to participate in those cycles through everyone who wants to participate and then come back again for second and third votes at the end. So with that, I know that Deputy Supervisor Noonan is manning the phone. And we will open it up to the public. Just want to remind the public to state their name for the record, as well as their address before they begin posing any questions or comments. Actually, this becomes, this is not really a question answering period. Again, that number is 518-793-6780. And while we're waiting for the public to call in if they choose to do so, I'd also be remiss to, and especially thank Lance Hellman from Hellman Brothers, who, as Don indicated, graciously donated property on Route 9 for the pump station at no cost to the project and is willing to provide space for the construction manager's trailer for the project. So I'll give him a shout-out as well.
Supervisor Cuzier, can you remind people, if they're looking at this number, to click the chat icon on the bottom of their screen? Because that might be the only way they see this number pop up, or they may see the chat. If they, if you can hear me, you click the chat icon down at the bottom of your screen and see the numbers.
So just a reminder, the public heard Deputy Supervisor Noonan indicate that anybody wants to have access to the number, which is 518-793-6780, all they need to do is click the chat icon on the bottom of their screen. Again, anybody with that on the screen?
We have a call coming in, Mr. Gethard. Hello, Mr. Gethard. Can you hear me? So you're going to have to turn your microphone off at home. Or mute your screen at home. And then I can put you on here. But with your microphone on at home, and this, it's going to echo. So you're going to have to turn, put yours on mute. How's that? Can you hear us? These guys.
So if Mr. Gethard is viewing, I'm not sure if you heard Deputy Supervisor Noonan indicate that in order for us to hear your call with no interference, you'll have to mute your viewing on your end. We will have you live on the phone on speaker. That way, we won't receive feedback, and you should be able to hear us clearly.
And this is being recorded by a stenographer, so he has to be able to get.
Yeah, very good point. I'm reminded by Town Attorney that statutorily, we're required to record the meeting via stenographer. So we have to be able to hear your sounds.
So he hung up. It's not his mute, it's also his microphone playing behind him. So he has to completely sound off. He said, just have a conversation with us. So if you can hear that, Mr. Gethard, please call back right in volume.
Let's see here. We have not started the 5:00 clock.
Let's try this again. He's calling. Hello, Mr. Gethard. This is Councilmember Noonan. Can you hear it? Turn your sound off at home. No, your sound. Turn your computer sound completely off or mute your computer sound. So it's just a conversation with us, and you're not listening to your computer.
Does that work now?
Yes. Okay, go for it.
Okay. I've talked to your engineer several times previously about the. I learned a lot about the haven sometime about the sewer. I'm surprised that some of the information on the force main, how it was redesigned and that, I hadn't seen before. It's definitely a different project. And what was presented and what was ran through the secret process, I believe that's to reaffirm the value of 16 secret. I'm concerned about future growth. I think it's a stated by the government, is like as part of a record, previously published, you go through the group of that, through the sewer master itself. I'm on the record as support sewer and as secret. I think it would be good, I've written very critical with this plan, is to question whether this is a contract growth or a historic growth because of the cost to someone, the price for the owners. And now with the force main, I sense from what knowledge I've gathered, it could be very difficult for a homeowner along the three miles with their arid neighbors to be able to hook up without a technical requirement in the entirety of sewer destiny. So I don't know, that don't discourage growth because the only way this plan is going to be reasonable is if we get the growth opportunity. And that's one of my concerns. And I'm not sure if some of the secret forms would have been entered different separately on the force main project versus correct. The. I'm trying to explain my knowledge. I had trouble getting on the line. Incidentally, it's terrible that the management of the supervisor is not really good to try to hear the presentation. Some people permit every particular knowledge of target public name. You know, in the whole, this is very bad. You know, it's the, when you go to the best valuation, where you leave the debt, you want by, I think it goes to the store. And it will help with the assessment. You want, please let me see the comments here that the previous public hearing, we put the vacant land and put the experience we were going, but didn't put the part of the, the $6 million or something there. And then I just want to see what you had in here. I have concerns about, because I don't have a hook up for water. I have some concerns about the square, the square of the force main. The debt and the amount of money that might be in total through the total water. And that's something I discussed for the engineer. They're thinking of a way to resolve that through my discussions with them. But I think we're very excited about that. Incidentally, I don't, my wife and I are owners of the property. We do have other owners with a problem with the family. Now, I have a separate land 50 feet wide. It goes down through, they have to make a sort on that. It's probably on the property, they have to level it up on that. And that is very easy. I mean, I know that there is a lot of potential to live out of that. The tradition of the normal community, buddy, this project, you know, thought that you'd be grabbing one of those stuff that cover and all for the ground. And it's been, because we don't close up the 18th change. It's too much that break from day one. It's an surprise to anybody. Don't forget, for the record, it was offered three hundred and forty to be a house. And anyone wants to, that he's running it, probably will. I have a favor to offer for the agreement that we reveal that. And it's not all on the things, but by the fact that we stand on how, how, how we, how we can afford a little very, very, very. But do I hit that concern of not, that, well, they started to think about the, the structure. But they were reminding me for, for looking at this property. But yeah, because they thought that it's probably, probably your head. And then he's taking care of the property that, that we have a correct overall.
Mr. Gethard, I don't mean to interrupt. We're well past the initial five minutes. If you think you can wrap up in the next minute or two, we'll let you continue. If not, I want to give, anybody else who wants to call in an opportunity. And then you can call back. You want to keep going?
What's that?
So I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I have some, what, what, what do you want me to be?
Okay.
All right. So is the line clear?
Okay, Mr. Gethard. Thank you very much. Yep. Okay.
All righty. So again, we'll open the lines to anybody who wishes to publicly comment on the proposal, the number is 518-793-6780.
Manager of opportunity. Just saying, no, the court recorder could not make out almost any of that. But we were recording here, too, right?
I am.
I suppose you can. I am recording it through Zoom.
It's recording on Zoom. She'll be able to listen to the Zoom and hopefully be able to stop it then. Maybe.
Because I'm hopeful, I'd be willing.
She's done it before.
I'd be willing to record calls on a cell phone. So she could be the other listener if we have, if we get another call.
So again, the telephone number is 518-793-6780. Anybody would like to add additional comments for the public hearing on the eminent domain process for our sewer project? So in an effort to be efficient, I will invite Mr. Gethard to call back. And continue his comments if he so chooses. Again, the number is 518-793-6780. Not sure if Mr. Gethard heard that we have not had anyone else call in. Wanted to, once again, invite him to call back if he would like to provide additional comments at the public hearing. While we're waiting, just I'd like to comment. It's not ideal, ideal setting for conductors of public hearings, but it's what we have to work with.
Hello, Mr. Gethard. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Why don't I just call this program back?
Now is, is fine. We're having trouble hearing you. Do you mind if I call you right back? It'll be coming from another phone line?
No.
Okay, we'll call you right back. So we're calling Mr. Gethard back. Let's see here. Let's try this. Three, two, one. I don't know if that's working. One second. Let's try that again. Three, two, one. Nine, seven, one, one. Thank you, Senator.
Hello, Mr. Gethard.
Yes?
Okay, you're back on. So the floor is yours, Mr. Gethard. Are you there, Mr. Gethard?
I am, but I, I'm not sure. But I, I can't hear. I don't tie this up. So I think I'm going to have to turn my volume up on my speaker. turn my volume on my speakers to hear him.
Mr. Gethard, I'm waiting you back for the call. So I'll be back. Are you there, Mr. Gethard?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you. But I'll turn my, my speakers on.
Okay. You're on. Go ahead.
Okay, one other concern I had was, was in future costs and people that are originally in the district as far as hooking up with those costs, we need.
Okay, before you continue, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please state your name and address for the stenographer?
Eric Gethard. And I own the properties, I run the properties on Doop Day.
The actual address.
And the address would be, please?
I don't have the address, the street, arts.
Twelve ninety-four, room nine, one two nine four. One two nine four, room nine. One two nine four.
Is that the one with about sixty feet of room?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
And you can leave my, you can leave my resident address?
No, no.
No, okay. All right, can you, could, could you hear my comments about the
If you wouldn't mind just getting that picture close?
Yes, we could hear you. I don't know if you can hear me if your mic.
Excuse me, sir. This is my order reporter. I unfortunately cannot hear your prior comments. Would you appreciate taking them?
I'm somebody's daughter, I couldn't tell, couldn't tell what they were saying.
So here, the stenographer could not hear your previous comments and would like you to restate your comment.
All the way back to the beginning?
Yeah.
It's going to be very hard. Hi. I'm not wanting to take everybody's kind of away. And even other people, I guess, wanted to speak, that's why I didn't finish the first time.
Well, go ahead, Eric, you have the floor.
And then the other thing is, have you done anything on, on the updated budget numbers on, on the O M F?
Eric, as a reminder, and I'm sure you're well aware, this is a public comment period. And it's not a question and answer, it's you making comments in relation to the project.
Okay.
Not made easements. The easement, the process of eminent domain for the easements we have in secure. That's what the public hearing is specific to. Not the project itself, the easements.
Okay. All right.
Are you all set for Mr. Gethard?
I think so.
Okay, thank you very much for calling yesterday.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Gethard. Again, the number to call in is five one eight, seven nine three, six seven eight zero. If anybody would like to comment on the public hearing regarding security easements for the sewer project. And again, just a reminder for anybody who does not want to speak publicly, have a comment for the record, and certainly welcome to submit written comments to be included in the record. And you can do that by providing it to the clerk's office here at the town hall. Just while we're waiting, question for the, what time did we actually open the public portion of what we opened up to public, you know, time that was?
It was about seven oh three when we opened up the public hearing.
When we
I'm not sure when people started coming in, I wasn't keeping track of that time.
Okay. Again, anybody who would like to voice their comments on the sewer easement public hearing. Number is five one eight, seven nine three, six seven eight zero.
Comments started coming in at seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty. So we'll go, we'll go at least a minimum of thirty minutes to give the public an opportunity to speak their piece. Speak their piece, and if we don't hear anything after that, then we'll consider wrapping up the hearing. Again, anybody who was joining late. We are in the process of conducting a public hearing for the eminent domain proceeding for top line parcels on Route Nine Commercial Corridor as part of our sewer infrastructure project. If you'd like to comment on the record, please state your name and the address for the recording stenographer. And the number to call in is five one eight, seven nine three, six seven eight zero. We'll, if the town board is in agreement, we will continue to lead the public hearing, open at least another four minutes.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right, we're down to the two-minute warning. Once again, invite anybody who would like to call in and publicly comment. Telephone number is five one eight, seven nine three, six seven eight zero. Okay, I'd like to, for a final time, invite anybody who wants to comment on the public hearing for the eminent domain proceeding regarding secure easements on Route Nine. The number to call in is five one eight, seven nine three, six seven eight zero. Last call. Since we have not received any additional calls, I want to thank the members of the public who reviewed the proceedings, as well as those that participated by calling in. And at this time, without objection, I'd like to close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
In discussion. Hearing not all in favor, closed. Public hearing is hereby closed officially announced. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Appreciate it.